We'll start the meeting now. Welcome to the regular BCC meeting for October the 10th, 2017. Please silence your phones and we'll call Father John Wallace to the podium now and his assistant, John, if you want to come stand with him. John Wallace is with Apostles by the Sea Anglican Church.
Yeah, thank you. I needed help. Okay, please stand and we'll do the pledge afterward. Anglian, yes.
Anglican.
Okay.
There we go.
Thank you.
The Lord be with you.
And also with you.
Let us pray. Lord God, Almighty and everlasting Father, all authority in heaven and earth belongs to you and in your wisdom you have given some of that authority to us. We pray that you would give each of us the wisdom and the courage to use that authority to say and do always what is right and what is good and in our decisions and actions to promote the well-being of all people. We ask this for the sake of your son, our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Like to recognize Major Preston tonight. He's with the Sheriff's Office. Thank you for coming and also Major Preston's going to be on our Triumph Board to represent the Sheriff's Office. So, thank you and congratulations for that appointment. We now call the meeting to order. Do we have any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda tonight?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We do have one addition regarding the discussion of rescheduling the November 14th, 2017 Regular Board of County Commissioners Meeting to accommodate travel to the Florida Association of Counties Legislative Conference that's being held in Sarasota, which will commence on the morning of the 15th. So, it'd be very difficult for those of you traveling to get there without moving the meeting to the 14th. What we'd like to do is discuss this item at the same time we're discussing the scheduling of Item 32, which was regarding the Sandeston NOPC. And we have had a request from the folks representing the Sandestons in the SOA to hear that after 6:00 PM because some of them were held up getting here. So, what we'd like to do is just add this discussion to the agenda with the understanding it'd be held at the same time we talk about the Sandeston NOPC hearing and I'd do that after 6:00.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda with additions, deletions, and changes?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now's the time for public comments. This is a time for anything on the agenda if you can't be here when your item comes up. We will have public comment after every, every agendated item and if you need to come up, state your name, spell your last name, and tell me your agendated item. This has to be on the agenda. Thank you, Ms. Bowman. What number are you speaking to?
Number one, Waste Management.
Number one, Waste Management?
Koi Bowman, B-O-W-M-A-N. I find it truly unbelievable that I came here six months ago and told you that your waste-bearing activities were killing me, my friends, and even you also. And the response I got was, "You don't know. Go ask someone else." And my favorite, "Well, we don't think we can do anything about that." Well, your Louis Levy Know Nothing, Say Nothing Politico will no longer be accepted by the people. You say you're supposed to be making the decisions while at the same time telling us you don't know anything at all. And you've made it quite clear that you can do whatever you want.
Is this about Waste Management?
At the beginning of every one of these meetings, you stand and pledge allegiance to our flag of the United States. Yes, this is about you burying waste-
No, Waste Management is a company. If you're going to speak about Waste Management, that's number one. You may speak about Waste Management. You may not speak about anything else except Waste Management or any number. You can wait till the end and say whatever you want to. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Any other public comments? Seeing none?
Do we have a motion? We'll move on to the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Number 24.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I acknowledge my conflict of interest. Excuse me. I will file the proper form with the clerk and will abstain from the vote.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the Waste Management?
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner's, the first item under admin is a request to approve and authorize the chair to sign the FYI 1718 Florida Department of Health Walton Core Contract and Fee Resolution. This is our contract with the Health Department that we enter into each year to define their roles and their services and to approve their fees. The only change in the fees is this year there's added an influenza A and B card, which is on their sliding scale of cost from $3.57 to $21. So, we would request your approval.
Want to answer the please shot?
Yes. Is that the shot, Holly? I'm sorry? Okay. Did you hear that?
No.
Come up and, Holly, if you would.
Just give us a brief update on-
Is it a shot or is it a test?
This isn't the actual shot. This is a test. But there's been no changes from last year from what we've given you on our core contract and our fee schedule, except for adding this one additional test. It's an AB. It's a card that you use, that we use it to test with. There's a certain thing that we do with that. And it's just called, let me go back to what, AB Card or let me see.
That's what I had.
Impulenza AB Card. We've added that to help us with diagnosing a flu.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, second. Any other discussion? Discussion from the audience? Questions from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next two items are somewhat related. If you recall, there were two parcels of property up in the Lake Jackson area. One parcel that had been presented as a potential gift to the county. That is a 90-acre parcel that's located at the intersection of Clear Springs Road and US 331. And you had asked us to do an environmental assessment of those and those findings are in your book. In this parcel, the total subject is 90 acres. 63 acres of that is jurisdictional wetlands with 27 acres of uplands. The parcel contains a pond of approximately three acres in size. It would be accessed through, from Clear Springs Road and the site could be utilized as a county park or for wetland mitigation for projects within the same watershed and outside of the service areas permitted mitigation banks. So, there is some value to the property with your permission. And actually today, we would move forward with communicating with the owners and their intent to gift it to the county and follow up to see where that would lead.
If you need a motion, so move.
Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion?
Discussion.
Yes, ma'am.
Would you explain an outside of the service areas of permitted mitigation banks? This parcel's two-thirds wetlands and the other one, I don't think has many wetlands. But the mitigation bank, I mean, do we have what we're going to mitigate and how we're going to-
Well, I don't, I think Scott Caraway, he can shed some light. Basically, the mitigation bank allows us to utilize that property within the watershed to offset impacts on other lands. But I'll let Scott give you a little bit of explanation.
Okay. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Scott Caraway, C-A-R-A-W-A-Y, Public Works. So, when we do road and bridge projects, if we have an impact, the first thing we have to do is look to use a mitigation bank. If a mitigation bank's not available, that's what we can do, excuse me, onsite mitigation. So, excuse me. So, this property right here up in the, sorry.
That's okay. I'm assuming the one that's touching 331, the area will be mitigated for when 331 finally goes through-
Well, if we had a project in the north end of the county, we could utilize this site as mitigation because there's no mitigation bank for the north end of the county.
Even with two-thirds wetlands, part of this can be mitigated?
We'd use the two-thirds wetland as our mitigation.
I got you. Okay. All right. And so, we know how much we're going to mitigate on the other parcel too, the 113. Is there, like DEP give us a, how much we can use it to mitigate?
Well, the other, the other property is 113 acres. There's only about 12 acres of it as uplands. So, that leaves us 101 acres of wetlands. And what we do is use that 101 acres of wetlands to offset future development projects the county does that may impact wetlands when a mitigation bank's not available.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I think we would unnecessarily be building our own mitigation bank.
That's right.
And we would have them in reserve that when we have an impact that we need to offset and there's not another mitigation bank, that we could come from here and draw whatever number of acres we need to, to set aside into conservation easement to offset the impacts of a road or bridge.
So, we can use wetland to mitigate wetlands?
That's what they require.
Yeah.
I understand now. I'm sorry.
Right now in the county, there's three mitigation banks. You have Devil Swamp, which is run by St. Joe. You have Nacouseh and then you have Sand Hill Mitigation Bank, which is run by DOT. Both of, all of those mitigation banks primarily serve from Highway 90 down to the Gulf of Mexico. So, we don't have anything in the north end of the county. So, if we have a road project or any type of improvement in north end of the county, we don't have any land to use as mitigation. This property would provide us that ability to mitigate.
I had it kind of backwards in my mind when I was studying. Sorry.
There's some, a lot of it's wet. There's some value to that.
Got you.
That's right.
And it's a gift.
Yes.
This one is correct.
The first one.
So, we have a motion, second. Any other discussion, questions? Questions, discussion from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners. So, the next item, again, is property located in that, in fact, the two parcels are butting one another. This is 113 acres. 101 acres are jurisdictional wetlands and 12 acres are uplands. Most of the 12 acres of uplands are scattered. However, there is one seven-acre continuous portion that is uplands or are uplands, whichever the case may be. Again, it could be utilized for a county park or wetland mitigation projects, just as discussed. We, this is for sale. We have spoken with the owner. Don't really have a price that he's asking because he doesn't know what the value is. So, what we would recommend is getting one appraisal on it and then allowing us to have some conversation with the owner to determine if there's, if we're close enough to have some serious negotiations about purchasing the property.
So move.
Motion, we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Want an appraisal? Do we only need one?
If, we only need one if it's less than $300,000. And quite frankly, if this is more than $300,000, we would probably shy away from it. Because, I mean, you'd be spending, it'd be a lot per acre.
All right.
But, and then we, but we can go from there. Once we get the first one, we can make some determination.
And I believe the owner has a desire to see the county use it as a park or-
That was what he conveyed just now.
So, maybe we can get a good deal out of it, hopefully. Okay, we have any other discussion, questions? From the audience, questions, discussions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign.
Okay. Next item is number 28, which is request to award and approve. We're going to come back, we're going to do that after 6:00 when we have the discussion about Sandeston NOPC.
We voted on that.
I've got this cold in hand.
He's a proud Nevo.
And we did it a little bit different. We did additions, deletions, and changes tonight. So, it's, it's all good.
We weren't really good. Next item is to request to award, approve, and authorize the chair to sign contract number 017-019 for the construction of the contract for the Oyster Lake Outfall improvements to the lowest responsible, responsible bidder, which is RBM Contracting Services LLC in an amount not to exceed $398,985. There's explanation in some of the scope of work there in your board package. If you have any questions, we will do our best to answer them.
RBM was the low bidder. So, do we have any other questions or do we have questions? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion if we need discussion.
Okay. Motion, we have a second for discussion?
Second for discussion.
Second for discussion.
Somebody tell us more about it?
If I ain't mistaken, and I think we got somebody from Public Works Engineering out there concerning this. This outfall here, apparently the county has reached some type of agreement several years back that says the county is going to be responsible for maintenance of this outfall to keep it from going on to the adjoining properties. I'm looking at a, an outfall that Mother Nature decides, I think, where it wants to go and where it doesn't want to go. And I'm just, have this concern about why we would get into some type of agreement to main, try to keep this thing where it's at whenever Mother Nature's going to let it pop where it wants to go and run where it wants to go.
Who at Public Works would like to come up and address that?
And we're looking at almost 400,000 here and who knows what it'll cost in the future.
For the record, Greg Graham, Public Works. I've got a little bit of history of it, but, but not the entire history. But, as my understanding, that it was a board initiative in the past to open up the natural outfall of Oyster Lake. At that particular time, there were two bridges constructed. One that goes across the forehand property over there on the north side of 38. And then there's also box cores that were removed and a bridge put in. And that was to try to restore the natural function of Oyster Lake. As part of that process, the county worked with the adjacent property owners to obtain a 50-foot easement. The, this project is to try to harden that shore outfall so that it is maintained within the 50-foot easement. There was a prior project that, that was done that was not successful. However, you're very limited on what the environmental agencies will let you do along there because they feel like it's a take of wildlife. The, so, this is the best we could do. Ideally, it'd be ideal if we could put retaining walls and control it within that 50-foot easement. However, we can only do what, what is permitted to the environmental agencies. This was handled by Dewberry, Preble, Rish, and we've got a valid permit to now go in there and do this project.
Can, excuse me, Greg. I can tell you, Commissioners, this was part of a settlement agreement a number of years ago from a lawsuit that we were to maintain the outfall within that 50-foot right-of-way. But I believe it's only for a certain distance. I don't believe it's, it's not all the way to the Gulf, if I recall. But, as Greg said, we've made some attempts to do that and we're hoping this one will be more successful than previous attempts. But it is part of a settlement agreement of a number of years ago from a lawsuit that said we would maintain it.
Any other questions?
Was maintained defined?
Well, it was to maintain it within the, the 50-foot easement that was granted from the drapes on the east and the boushes on the west.
I guess I was more thinking in what manner, you know?
Well, so, so that it flows within that 50-foot easement.
Because I have the same concerns as Commissioner Chapman. Mother Nature's going to do what she wants to and just try to stop it. We've had some really good examples of that this year. How much, you know, is this a one-time? Greg, do you feel like this is a one-time and it will be fixed? Or is this something that we're going to continue to have to, with the next storm or the next whatever, go back and redo and redo?
You know, the ideal project, as I stated earlier, would be to sheet pile it within that easement. That was attempted to permit to the environmental agencies. So, this particular project is to involve a geofabric to try to harden the sand along there. And it's shaping it up with some latol shelves and it's going to be some, some sea oak plantings that are rooted in. So, it's got a better chance of success than the last project, which they did not allow anything other than shaping a latol shelf, a sand latol shelf. And the first outfall event pretty much washed that away. So, short answer is I really can't tell you if it's going to be successful or not. We're, it's not the best that, that could be done to control it within that easement. But it's, it's certainly, we are hoping it's going to be a successful project and do the job.
And it perhaps is the best that we can get permitted from the regulatory agencies that allow us to-
That is absolutely the case. Thank you.
And I think I understand. And Sydney, we're under obligation because of lawsuit to do something.
Yes, ma'am. So, this lawsuit predates my time of the county. I can get you all a copy of the settlement agreement, but that is my understanding of the settlement agreement.
And that pretty much answers the question.
Any comments, questions from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Four to one.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item is request to award invitation of bid 017-026 for the Big Redfish Lake improvements to the lowest responsive, responsible bidder, which was Murfree Bridge Corporation. And again, there's some explanations there that I believe Public Works has briefed you on some alternates that would include a shorter timeframe, either a 90 or 60-day window to complete construction. And as you move this forward, and you'll see the next item is request to approve for the chair to sign the contract. We just need to make sure we include the appropriate options into the motions.
We have somebody, Public Works, can come up here and talk to this?
Yes, ma'am.
Chance Powell for the record, Walton County Public Works. As far as the alternate layout goes, alternates three, four, and five are for the repairs to the road and bike path that would be needed for Oaklusa Gases Utility Relocates that have to take place early on in the project. That will start on October the 23rd. We don't anticipate the bridge contractor starting until November the 1st or shortly thereafter. Alternate one is the, the alternate to go to the 60-day contract from the 90-day contract. I've talked with the contractor. We did have, this contract basically has no timeframe restrictions on it. That contractor is allowed to work pretty much 24/7. He's told me that with the 60-day contract, there'll be limited work at night, you know, based on conditions. However, the 60-day contract, he will definitely be working at night. It will be lit up like the Fourth of July and they will be driving piles 24/7. So, that is something to consider. I just wanted to make you guys aware of that.
Are we ready to make a motion?
Chance, they're not going to be pounding pilings in there for 60 days. I mean, there's, how many did you tell me there was?
I think there's just shy of 30 piles.
So, probably two weeks out of that?
About two weeks out of it. But if, you know, if there's some rain delays, it could, it could stretch on. Obviously, those rain delays are, would, they would get that back on the contract. But with, with every day that we miss, that's going to ramp up the impact throughout the day and night. And, you know, it's, it's a 60-day contract. 90 days, we're getting started in November, will be done, you know, theoretically before February. That gives us a month buffer to spring break. That's on the 90-day contract. With the, with the 60-day contract, my fear is that if we get into liquidated damages, it could get ugly and that, and the chances of getting into those liquidated damages on the 60-day contract is much higher than the 90-day contract.
So, are you recommending the 90-day contract or you want us to decide?
You're asking for my recommendation.
I'm asking your recommendations. You're the expert.
Now, let me preface this. With, I don't own a business over there on 38 and I don't live in that section of 38. But I don't know that the, that, that the value, that you're getting, the value for, for the, for the additional time. Given that we now have signalized intersections at both 83 and 283 on 98, there's a, a safe detour. I don't see the impact with the 90 days. The last time on Draper Lake, it was 120-day contract and we opted to go to a 90-day and didn't take it. This time, we started with 90-day, which is, which is what we hope to get, you know, last time on Draper Lake. But I think, that's my, did that, did that come out as a recommendation? I'm not sure.
Well, that's-
90-day will probably allow the noise to be more during, we can kind of-
You know, we can't guarantee it.
I understand guarantee, but.
Please be sure it will be during the day, not at night.
Frank Murphy with, Murfree Bridge is here. If y'all have any questions for him, he may be able to shed a little more light on the construction means and methods if y'all would like to ask him any questions.
Would y'all like for me to bring him up?
I would.
Okay. Mr. Murphy? Good evening.
Good evening. Frank Murphy for the record.
Would you spell your last name for me?
M-U-R-P-H-R-E-E. And it's correct in the agenda.
Mr. Murphy, as you can tell, we're concerned about driving pilings at night.
As am I.
And all of us would like to have this done in 60 days. But, you know, we have some mitigating circumstances for that. Or if we do the 90 days, are all the pilings going to be driven during the daytime?
They are. Yes, sir. I think we have a remote chance of even having to do any night work. The days are getting a little shorter. So, we're probably looking at some, what's the time changes? We've got some dusk work, but not night work. My concerns are, go beyond just the pile driving. Just like the last project that we did for Walton County and everyone we've done before that, we're going to give a 100% effort to, to give you what you've asked for. I'm afraid that, that, that effort brings an excessive amount of impact outside of the limits of the project in the way of trucks and deliveries and noise. My fear is at the end of the day, we're, we're going to be unhappy with what we paid a bunch of money for.
Do I have a motion? Commissioner Anderson?
I make a motion that we do the 90 days. I would, and I'm going to tell you, I hate making that motion, but I also know that the impact we have on the people in that area will be great. We need that-
on the people in that area will be great. We need that thing done as quickly as possible and as safely as possible for your guys. So I make the motion we approve the ninety-day time period.
I will second his motion to also include, and ask Commissioner if you'll include in his original motion to approve the ninety days, as he stated, with Alternates three, four, and five as part of the motion.
I will certainly do that.
There a motion? And a second, any more discussion, questions from the Commission?
Can we, Alternate two, have been kept out? The option listed above did not include Alternate two?
No, it did not.
The ninety-day option includes three, four, and five.
Neither one included two. Did you want to make consideration for the contingency, or without two?
My motion is without it.
Mine is too.
And Commissioners, I'm sorry, but I think we're actually getting ahead of ourselves a little bit. If we could set that motion aside, and first, on item number twenty-nine, award the bid to Murfree Bridge, we could have a motion for that first, and then on item number thirty, we can.
So move.
Any discussion on the ward? Any discussion from the audience on the ward? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And now, on number thirty, we'll talk about which.
Now, I make the motion for the ninety-day, including three, four, and five.
Second.
Any other discussion from the Commission? Any comments from the audience? Yes, ma'am, come on up.
Thank you, Commissioners. Lee Moore, M-O-O-R-E. And I wanted to ask about Alternate number two. I've been working some with Public Works on options to improve the aesthetics of the bridges in South Walton, especially the Coastal Dune Lakes bridges. And I just want to ask about this because I noticed that in the other bid from the other firm that submitted a bid, this, the cost they put in for this alternate option was significantly lower than the overall low bidder. I believe it was thirteen thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars versus the bid from the overall low bidder being eighty-five thousand. So that's a significant difference in the cost of that particular option. And I have been pushing for quite some time to improve the aesthetics of these bridges, and I think that etching and staining would do that. There are some other things I'd like to see happen as well, but I just wanted to ask if there might be a possibility. I understand that eighty-five thousand might be high, and I'm assuming, it hadn't been said, but I'm assuming that might be why it's not being considered. But if another company can do the same application for that much less money, I'm wondering if it would be possible to get that done by someone else or work on getting that price down from the overall low bidder. Just wanted to put that question out there because I'd really love to see these bridges start having some aesthetic enhancement added to them as they go in. Thank you.
No, I'm fine.
We're fine. We're set with our.
I think we might do that at a later date.
Okay, we have a motion. And a second, any other discussion from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like something? Okay, next, we have Jason Cutsaw for Jay Tusa. Mr. Tusa's sick tonight. He had a backache, hurt his back.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair, Commissioners. Thank you for your time. Again, Jason Cutsaw, TDC Director of Administration. I've got two updates for you. The first update is a reminder that the Beach Alternates Workshop will be held on the eighteenth of October at three P.M. here at the South Walton Annex. And the second update is our bed tax collection numbers for August. August twenty-seventeen was up by five point eight-five percent from twenty-sixteen. That's at two million, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and nine dollars. Year-over-year total, as of August, was eight point seven percent above last year at twenty-one million, five hundred and eighty-five thousand and forty-one dollars. With that trend, it looks like we're gonna have a record year with bed tax selection this year, which is really exciting for everybody. And barring any questions, that's all I have for updates.
I do have a comment, please. Madam Chairman? This weekend, I know that Lou sent out the notice about the workshop on the eighteenth. And I want to commend him. He was working on a Sunday. I know, I happen to know where he was. He was probably at VOC monitoring Nate the Storm, and he just wasn't sitting there eating Twinkies. He was not only, you know, monitoring that storm, but he was doing his job even on a Sunday. And I want to thank him for that. You know, it's employees like him and the others sitting at that table, as a matter of fact, that make us proud. So I just wanted to thank Lou for getting that notice out so people could know in time. Thank you.
Thank you, Lou. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Thank you for the good work y'all do. Sidney?
Yes, ma'am. My only item, you guys voted at the beginning of the meeting for us to consider that at six P.M. That's all I had.
All right. Commissioner Anderson, do you have anything?
No.
Commissioner Commander?
I do. As most of you are aware, Public Works and I and a number of others have been working on fishing on the old part of Three Thirty-One Bridge. There are some old timers in this community that have always fished there at the end of the relief bridge. And of course, when they were through, they put up no parking signs. And also, they have always been able to go under that bridge, when it was just one, and fish under there. And I'm told by some of the older gentlemen, that's just the best fishing spot in this county. It just can't get any better than under that bridge. And DOT restricted their use of that, thanks to Wilmer and all the guys at Public Works and Buddy, God bless him. I have, once a, every week on Monday, I called Buddy and said, "Where are we?" And Sidney, too, we've worked out an agreement with DOT. Those of you that crossed the bridge today, I don't know if you noticed, but they've already moved the no parking signs to allow an area of fishing there between the relief bridge and, I don't know how many feet it is, but to give some of the old timers a chance to drive off the shoulder there and fish where they have forever. And also, we have, in my packet, we have a memorandum of agreement with DOT that we will help maintain under that bridge, pick up the garbage, we'll do, you know, some maintenance so that the older fellows can go under there and fish. And I will say, a lot of these people that fish under there, they don't do it for sport. They do it for food. A lot of people in that area fish that area, they say it's the best, but they do it, you know, it's just not a sport with them. So I have in front of you, first of all, a resolution to approve authorizing the chairwoman to sign the agreement with DOT for portions of Three Thirty-One Bridge. That's the first item, and then the second would be a request to approve the chair.
Do we need a motion on that first item?
And I will make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussions? Great project, thank you. Any questions, comments from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now your second item.
And then the second item is requested you approve and authorize the chair to sign the maintenance agreement with DOT. Basically, it said we're gonna be responsible for picking up the trash, making sure it's cleaned. If any maintenance needs to be done on that little stretch, we will take care of it, Public Works. And I have been in constant comment about that. Don't think it will cost that much. We're talking about maybe mill madding part of it as people drive down there. So I would ask that we also authorize the chair to sign that maintenance agreement.
So is that a form of a motion?
That's a motion.
Make a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, second. Any other discussion, discussion from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And also got a letter that our two fish cleaning stations have been approved by FDOT. The surveillance camera, they cannot, I know you probably saw that this week, but we can get fish cleaning stations. So that's good news. Commissioner Nipper, do you have anything? Vice Chair Chapman, do you have any?
Briefly, I want to thank the board and staff for their condolences in the recent passing of a mother. She was ninety-one. She led a long life. But thank you for your prayers, your card, and your sympathy. Thank you.
On November the first, from three to five, we'll have our first Triumph Board Meeting. It will be at the North, BCC Court, in the courthouse at the north. And I see Bonnie McQuiston, I believe you're on the Triumph Board, and thank you for serving. And I've already acknowledged Major Preston, so we have others we're looking forward to moving forward. And we want to get our fair share of the money, but we want to do some competitive pots, too. We have some projects that are shovel-ready, ready to go, so that's all I have. So we now, we don't have any citizen requests tonight that I know of, but public comments? This is a time that you can speak to anything on the agenda or off the agenda, as long as it's not personal. No personal attacks. So, Mr. Hudson, you may come up.
For the record, my name is Bob Hudson, H-U-D-S-O-N. I just have a simple request. As I sat here tonight, there were some items that y'all made motions to proceed with. But I had questions, and I decided not to be a jack-in-the-box and just ask at the future if we could put funding sources on the agenda where people could understand what the source of the money to buy a hundred and thirteen acres of land was projected to be. I think that would help the public understand what's going on and provide some transparency. Thank you.
We'll look into that. Thank you. Any other public comments? Yes, ma'am, Ms. Harris.
This was really for TDC, but you didn't have public comments under TDC.
I'm sorry. Sometimes I do make mistakes.
I need, I need to ask him a question.
Well, you need to ask us, and then we'll ask him.
Okay, great. I came to y'all not long ago, about maybe June, that we had the county flagpole on our property, and nobody had flown a flag for a long time. So Jay Tusa was here, so he called me after the meeting, and he explained to me that the flagpole thing, the cord runs inside the pole, and they had broken it somehow. And that, you know, they would be out to fix it. So they came out to fix it probably the end of July, first of August, end of July. And he asked me, would it be okay for them to move the new one out of the dune where they had put it closer to the beach? It'd be easier for the guys that come to change it. We said, sure. So they did. Three days later, with all the people on my boardwalk going to the beach, you hear this loud snap, and the flagpole, the whole thing falls over. One child hit the ground, otherwise it would have hurt. There were a bunch of people in there when it happened. It broke the, we have a boardwalk with sides, broke the wood on both sides. So I called the fire department, who puts flags up, called Sammy, called Jay. They assured me we would have another flagpole right away. So now we're in October, and I think the flagpole's still laying on the beach. I don't think anybody even moved it. So it's still laying out there, and it's October. And I'm just trying to see what we have to do to get a flagpole. Because at the last meeting y'all had, I was out of town, but y'all were approving new flagpoles for other people. So since mine should have already been here, I would think, in three months. Because it got here when it was broken, and you ordered the first one, it got here in like two and a half weeks. And then when this one snapped in half because it was not put in right, I'm just waiting to see, are we gonna get one or not? And is anybody gonna move the old one off my beach?
Mr. Cutsaw, do you have any information, or do you need to get back with Mr. Tusa or Brian and, come on? Brian, could you come up? I can't hear you from there. State your name and spell your last name, please. It's a long one.
Brian Kellenberger, Director of Beach Operations, K-E-L-L-E-N-B-E-R-G-E-R. We installed two flagpoles on the beach last week. I have to confirm that one was at Edgewater. If the pole is still there, it'll be removed tomorrow.
Okay, but you did install the flagpole?
We installed two flagpoles last week.
Okay, okay.
One of them, I do know, was at Frangis that we signed the agreement with, and I believe the other one's yours.
You do?
I believe so.
Because y'all have to call me to get in the gate. You can't get to the beach through the gate because I have to keep to the walk.
If you let me give you a little bit of time?
That'd be great. I don't think I saw it today. Thanks, Brian.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am, come on up.
My name is Patricia Dowd, D-O-W-D. I just have a question on number thirty-eight. That Black Creek property that's thirty-two some acres, and they want to switch it, can I speak to that, ma'am?
You can. We're gonna have another time that you could speak in the planning.
Okay, I just, I just want to.
And if you need to leave early, go right ahead.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make, it's going to be rezoned, or asking to be rezoned from residential and residential estate to business. Is that correct? Am I right in that?
Business park.
Business park.
Business park, okay. The only thing the community is worried about is that it would be, a landfill would not be considered in business park. Is that correct?
Matt would have to answer that, but I doubt it would be.
Mr. Carpenter, right here.
Matt Carpenter for the Planning Department. The landfill is not an eligible use in the Business Park Future Land use District.
It is not.
There is nothing proposed here that would allow a landfill of any kind.
Thank you. Thank you for asking that question. Anyone else?
Lee Moore, again, representing Senet Corridor Foundation this time. I just wanted to say thank you, a huge thank you. We have the ribbon cutting for Senet Corridor Foundation and the County, Board of County Commissioners jointly, for the landscaping project here on Three Thirty-One. And actually, DOT is about to start the second phase of that, which will go from Chat Holly over, past the north end of the bridge, so that will set off the bridge very, very nicely. Just wanted to thank you, first of all, for agreeing to fund the maintenance and making that project just about a hundred times better than it would have been. Without that, it was a huge improvement to the project that you all made possible by approving the funding for that maintenance. And it is very much appreciated. I've heard so much talk about this project in the community, positive talk, which is great. And also, wanted to thank you for your willingness to do the letter of support, for having it dedicated to Mr. Merlin Allen. It was very special. It meant a lot to a lot of us, and probably to some of you as well, I think. So anyway, like to talk about the positive stuff, and that was a really positive one. Thank you very much.
Thank you. It was our pleasure to do it. Thank you. Anyone? Yes, sir, come on up.
The new flagpole was installed on Wednesday. The old flagpole was removed a month ago. The reason there was a short delay between the broken pole removal is because we had one in stock at that time. It takes about six weeks to get a new one. So we ordered three last time around. But anyway, everything should be taken care of at Edgewater.
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks for the quick update. Anyone else? Seeing none, we will take a fifteen-minute break to the planning time. Mr. Carpenter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Matt Carpenter for the Planning Department. First item on our agenda this evening, seventeen, five-thirty. This is a request to approve staff's recommendation to implement a mobility fee slash impact fee structure. This program would effectively replace the current proportionate fair share structure used to mitigate the impacts of development on the county's transportation system. Our consultant tasked with updating the transportation element of the comprehensive plan has a separate portion of our update, the comprehensive plan. Tim Whaler from Renaissance Planning Group is here and has a brief presentation to give you an overview of what this is.
Thank you.
Hi, Tim Whaler, Renaissance Planning. Thank you, guys, for letting me be here tonight to present to you where we are in addressing transportation mitigation strategies for Walton County. First thing I would like to talk about is, well, explain what is transportation mitigation. And the simplest way to explain it is, as new development comes in, there's new trips associated with that development. And mitigation is a fee or a strategy to make sure that the needed improvements in the transportation network are in place for that development, to accommodate that development. So why are we talking about transportation mitigation tonight? As Mac mentioned, we've been tasked with assisting staff in updating the transportation element of the comprehensive plan. And goal one of the transportation element is essentially to address transportation mitigation. And so, to this point, what we've done is we have evaluated the existing system, provided a summary to staff. We've also done some background research. We've also done some background research of existing strategies for transportation mitigation throughout the state of Florida and elsewhere. We reviewed the findings with staff and worked with them to determine what the best recommendation to move forward is, and that's what we'll be briefly discussing tonight. So the current system that you guys have in place is established in two objectives underneath the main goal on the comprehensive plan. And it's a two-stage approach. Basically, you have what's called the concurrency management system, which is a way for the county to monitor development activities and committed trips associated with active developments. And it also monitors the level of service of the existing network throughout the county. The second portion of that is the actual fee calculation. It's, it's called proportionate fair share methodology. It's established by state statute on how you actually calculate the fee for proportionate fair share. So as I briefly talked about, the concurrency management system, it is a county-maintained database tracking those development orders and level of service. It does require, require continual updating because DOs are always coming in and developments are actually being built, so the trips are entering the network. You also have to update the traffic counts and account for any changes in the network that may have affected capacity, any improvements that may have increased capacity and changed. And it is a data-intensive database because it tracks the capacity of every segment within the county's roadway network, which there's quite a few of those segments. The proportionate fair share methodology, it is a technical methodology that relies heavily on the concurrency management system to have accurate data to determine what the fair share of the developers' impacts are going to be, and then calculating a fee based on the needed improvements and their proportionate fair share. And really, one of the drawbacks to proportionate fair share is it only measures automobile capacity, so no other modes are measured, no transit, no walking, no biking. So those improvements are not included in that proportionate fair share fee. This is a diagram of how the proportionate fair share calculation is done, and I'm not gonna go through every single step for, for the time we have. But basically, you can see that the main outline is a development application comes in. It includes an engineering traffic impact fee study. Staff evaluates that study to make sure the methodology's correct, and then they determine from that study which segments are impacted. And if any of those segments have a deficiency on them or a deficiency will be created on those segments, then the proportionate fair share fee comes into effect. There's no impact on those specific segments since there, there's no fee associated with that development. So as we're talking about updating the comprehensive plan, since the last update, there's been a series of changes in the state regulations on how transportation concurrency and mitigation strategies are, are to be done throughout the state. And the main takeaways from the changes in legislation are a move towards more multimodal planning, so putting other modes into your methodology, transit, bicycle, pedestrian, not just measuring auto trips. And from that legislation has evolved a strategy to do that that's called the mobility fee. So the current state regulations require the county, through their comprehensive plan, to do certain items to address transportation. The, the main one, the main shift is, as I mentioned, shifting to the multimodal improvements, so not just counting cars on the roadway, but actually accounting for the total transportation network with all the other modes included. Shift towards establishing what's called an area-wide level of service. So the current level of service is literally every segment of the roadway. How is traffic moving through that segment and where are the congested segments? An area-wide level of service takes an approach of the, the greater transportation system and network within an area and how is that functioning as a whole? Not so focused on the actual pinpoint spots, but taking an area-wide approach. And that reflects a more realistic approach in transportation planning, because typically the areas that have transportation congestion are the areas of high activity and it's really not feasible to eliminate all of transportation congestion through widening, because you would be removing typically what's generating, from a land use standpoint, the activity that causes the congestion. The legislation also encourages the, the counties to focus on their locally-desired transportation pa, or development patterns. That's basically saying, the, the county is not one development type. There are different development types throughout the county. Walton County is a great example of that. South Walton development pattern is much different than North Walton. So the legislation wants you to create a transportation system that encourages what you see as the appropriate type in each area. And the, another point they touch on specifically is to increase areas where you do have the potential for transit to, to create the pedestrian access to actually get to the transit, so the transit system can function. Okay, so the benefits of the mobility fee for Walton County. Really, the key here is it's going to allow the county greater flexibility in how they collect the fees and what they spend those fees on. So the flexibility in collection really goes back to tying it to your future land use map. You've designated areas, you want certain development types, and this allows you to create a transportation system that will support that development type you've established in the future land use. And the flexibility of funding, it allows you to pay for auto improvements, walking, bicycle, and transit capital cost and operating cost in the fee. So it, it allows you to, to fund that multimodal network that the comprehensive plan calls for now. The second point is really key, it establishes a more transparent system. So the mobility fee is, is based on the development plan. So the fee is based on, if you're doing, let's just say, residential development, it, it assigns a fee in the fee district per unit. So as a developer, if you come in and you're proposing 100 units and the per-unit fee established in the mobility analysis is $5, then you know your fee is gonna be 500, because you have 100 units times the $5. So it provides transparency to the developer upfront. There's some certainty in what their fees are going to be. It also provides the citizens and the county a clear picture of what the improvements are going to be, because there is a, a, a strategy and plan of improvements assigned to each fee district. So there, there'll be basically a map showing you, here are the improvements that we are gonna do based on what we forecast in the future land use map as future growth for the county. The other key points are, it, it creates a consistent update cycle. As we talked about, the current system, it's a continual update. It's very staff-intensive to keep it up-to-date and technically sound. The mobility fee would allow you to have, typically, there's an annual review period where you make sure that the goals and the projects you have in your plan are meeting what the county intends to do with the fees. And then typically, every five years, you would actually update the projects in there. It's usually in line with what the state is doing in their work program or the Regional Planning Council is doing in their long-range transportation planning framework. It also prov, promotes the appropriate development patterns, which we mentioned. The future land use map has those patterns outlined, and the mobility fee will let you address the transportation elements that go with that future land use map. Let's see. It provides an alternative to, to traditional concurrency like we talked about. Instead of counting cars and focusing on moving cars through specific segments, it allows you to focus on the greater area and providing the service, complete network of service throughout the county. And then the mobility fee calculation is much simpler than the proportionate fair share. Like I mentioned, the development application comes in, you know how many units are associated with that development, and you've done the, the multimodal fee analysis to determine what the fee is based on those units. And then the mobility fee is calculated from those, so. Okay, so wrapping up, next steps. In working with, with staff, we, we determined that the mobility fee is appropriate to move forward with the analysis. So what we would do is we would update the comprehensive plan language to actually allow the mobility fee study to be undertaken and evaluated. And then, so the next step would be actually to initiate that mobility fee analysis to determine where you would be, how you would calculate the fees and apply those. And then in the interim, you would need to, or I would recommend you, continue with the proportionate fair share system to make sure you have transportation mitigation ongoing while you're establishing that mobility fee analysis and getting that program up and running. That's all I have.
Do we have any questions? So we want to take number 35 first. Do we want, we want a request to approve staff's recommendations to implement a mobility fee impact fee structure. So we need a motion and a second, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Some, yes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions, discussion? Seek, you have, you have something you want to say?
And annually, it's going to be updated, because that's part of, I feel like we're moving so quickly in this county on the south end. And like you said, it's gonna flex between the south Walton, like north central, which is where probably Dufuniac, the city, would be. And you said it's gonna flex. But annually, this is gonna be updated and then every five years, what's, what was, what happens every five years again, please?
So what other communities have done typically is there's an annual review of the program.
Okay.
And then a scheduled five-year update. And that corresponds to when typically the county is updating their capital improvements program. At that time, you would incorporate that in.
All right. I noticed one of them was transparency. Are we gonna have this in software so that someone can look at the computer and see where, where these projects are or how much we are being assessed or how much each project, project is assessed?
Yeah, you certainly could do both. Communities do have calculators on their website for the development community to forecast what their fee's gonna be. And certainly, they have mapping and documentation outlining what those improvements are.
Okay. Do we have any questions from the audience? Seeing none? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Thank you. Our next, number 36, would be to move forward with an RFP to complete the necessary impact mobility fee study. Do we have a motion?
A motion.
And a second?
Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion, questions from the commission? Seeing none? Any, any from the audience, questions, comments? Okay, seeing none. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. The next item is number 37, the comprehensive plan text amendments, part two. This is a continuation of the public hearing that we started on September 12th when we first discussed this. Kristen Schale will, will make her presentation.
Commissioners, I'm not gonna go through the same presentation that we did last time, but we do have some planning commission recommendations that we would need to decide if those were going to be in the transmittal drafts. And we also have a map revision that the St. Joe Company brought to me this afternoon that it looks like we may have an older version of the Bay Walton Sector Plan map and the future land use map, so we would need to make sure that we have the correct adopted version of that Bay Walton Sector Plan map in the transmittal version of the future land use map. So I wanted to bring that to your attention so we can make sure that that's correct. If you like, I can just remind you of the planning commission's recommendations on future land use. Want to start there or do we need to go back further?
I think planning commission would be a good start.
Okay. Find it here. Okay, they basically, they had two recommendations on the future land use element. They did not make any recommendations on economic development or intergovernmental coordination, which we have tabled. You tabled that one at your last meeting, because we're pending some school board work. So the first recommendation was to create a new zoning district that would have a maximum density of two units per acre, and that would be in the land development code as a zoning district. We, we did bring forward chapter two, if you recall, just so people could see where things were shifting around to. And this wouldn't be applied on the map anywhere, but it would be available for people seeking rezonings or as an alternative district. And so that was the first recommendation. And if you concur, we will include that in the land development code draft coming forward to you. And the second recommendation that they made is they asked staff to do two things. One is to bring back a set of recommendations that deal with the incompatibilities between some of the larger rental homes that we have in our existing neighborhoods and the existing neighborhood. So kinda dealing with how those structures relate to those neighborhoods. And along those lines, they said they would like to remove the impervious surface ratio, ISR, and the floor area ratio metrics or requirements from the comprehensive plan and pending some sort of change possibly there. If, if we didn't result in any change, those things would be placed in the land development code as is per the, the scope of this project. So we could talk about that a little bit. You know, you may have some public comment on that, but those were the only two recommendations that they had regarding this, this round.
Any questions?
The second recommendation. Get down in the weeds a little bit on how that's going to affect a project.
Well, there's a lot of things going on and it, it's hard to kinda conceptualize, but one thing, there's, impervious surface ratio really is a stormwater metric and it, it regulates how much pervious surface you have on your site. It doesn't really have a lot to do with size of the building unless parking is attributed to square footage. But for our residential structures, we regulate parking by number of rooms. So it doesn't really get us to a building control necessarily. The, the floor area ratio is a little bit different and it really, you, you almost have to look at the neighborhood, the scale of the neighborhood, and decide what type of a structure would, would work here, because every scale is gonna be different. It can be very limiting on structure size. That's, there, there's a potential there if, you know, the height of these structures or the actual building mass of these structures is what is problematic. You, you almost have to get into it with the neighborhoods and see, well, you know, is it open space that you desire or is it a smaller height? Is it the ability of people kinda looking down into backyards? It's very location-specific. And these metrics, ISR and FAR, they really have to work together and with your parking requirements and with your stormwater requirements, because all of those things can conflict and not come up with the desirable outcome. So, you know, if we're interested in looking at that, I think that's what the planning commission asks, is can you bring back some different ideas of how we can mitigate these perceived adverse impacts?
So basically, on the compatibility side, when you're talking, sorry, floor area ratio?
Mm-hmm.
So what we're trying to do is avoid the 10,000-square-foot home next to a single-family large residential area?
That was the intent of the discussion with the planning commission, yes. And, you know, that would be regulatory and would limit the size of structures. I mean, there's really no other way to do that. You know, we're not dealing with buffers and side yards and things that we're dealing with on commercial developments. There really is the size of the building. There really is the size of the building.
Okay, it's basically compatibility for the long-term aesthetics of our, of the area?
Yeah, I mean, the discussion was that, you know, these, these buildings don't necessarily fit in the neighborhood context that they're in. And again, neighborhood context is different by area. So it can be fairly complicated.
Any other questions before we open it up to public comment? Public comment on this issue? Mr. Gardner? And Lisa, I believe you signed up, so you can be next, if you want to be.
Excuse me, Randy Gardner. I basically support what she has said and what I've read. But for clarity, this is something I deal with for many years, so it's a little more user-friendly for me. So basically, what, but I feel it's more of a control. I think it's subjective to say, to go into a neighborhood and say, these houses have this look, and this house has a different look. That's dangerous territory. And you can, to some degree, talk about size, but what this will really do on the impervious surface areas is to say this. Impervious simply means water won't go through it. Concrete, water runs off. Sidewalks, driveways, to some degree, brick pavers, it may absorb some. But it's basically, impervious is just that, water won't go through it. So what happens in an area, let's say, an old-planted subdivision, or a subdivision, it doesn't just have to be old. Depending on when it was platted, there was, there may not be a master stormwater plan. So it may be 150 lots, or whatever the number may be, that there's, that it's not really a comprehensive plan for water retention, water runoff. So what's happened over the years, even now, not over the years, is some subdivisions have been developed, but there's lots that are still vacant. And the home that goes in it may meet the seven-and-a-half-foot setback on the left and the seven-and-a-half feet on the right, 15 at the rear and 20 at the front. So it meets the setback requirements. But if the house footprint is too large, footprint, I don't care if it's three stories tall, it only, we call it a footprint. How much land does it occupy? And if that house occupies every bit of the space other than the required setbacks, and it's what, well, I'll stay away from it, where it's a large home, then perhaps three stories, 6,000 square feet, with an 18-inch roof overhang, those side yards can't handle that water. That's, they're not designed for it. So when that much water is coming down, hits that seven-and-a-half feet, it's going pretty much to the neighbor, or it's going the opposite direction you want. So this will require, under the ISR, will actually require a more thorough, and it's not, to me, it's not going to be that complicated. There's a lot of pieces to the puzzle, but, but it's relatively, it's not simple, but it can be dealt with in a fairly direct way, which won't be so objective when it's being reviewed. The, so I think that's a very good idea for the discussion. Again, as it relates, now, we talk about the FAR, which is the floor area ratio, that's a little different. Meaning, they work together, just as she said, but they're two different subjects. One, impervious relates to, or the ISR relates to stormwater. And I see my time's up.
Could I ask, I mean, could I ask him to finish? I'm kind of learning something here. Sure, yes, yes.
The, so the ISR, impervious surface ratio, it really deals with stormwater. That's what it is, for the most part. The FAR, to some degree, relates to, you don't want a lot anywhere, whether it be commercial or residential, with that 75% of is taken up by a big building. So it is a ratio as to if you've got a lot that's, let's say, that's 1,000 square feet. I mean, that's, that's just a pick a number. Well, under the FAR, then, then you may only be able to build 50% of that area. If you want to build a bigger, a bigger building, you've got to have a bigger lot. So to some degree, that does have some merit for further discussion as it relates to communities that need to be reviewed as to, you don't build a, especially a duplex, 7,000-square-foot house in a community that's basically 3,000, 3,500. So I think, hopefully, you will vote to move this forward so it can be further discussed and refined, which will help everybody.
Thank you very much for those comments. Lisa, are you ready to come up? No? Okay, anyone else? Okay, so we need a motion and...
Well, I think we...
We need a motion to include these two?
I think we need recommendations on what you want to do on those two planning commission recommendations.
And do we need to include the updated future land use map into, in the motion? She said this one is not updated.
Yes.
Yes.
When you're ready to make the motion, it should include the latest St. Joe Sector Plan map.
That's been approved by the board.
Yeah.
And the two planning recommendations.
So moved to include those.
Okay, so you want to, I guess, go with the two planning commission recommendations?
And the map.
And the map.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Thank you. Black Creek of Northwest Florida.
Thank you, Commissioners. Next item is Black Creek of Northwest Florida. This is a large-scale amendment. I'll ask Bob Barante to review this development to introduce the project, and the applicant is here to make a presentation. Sorry, I'm going to have to pretend to be Bob. I did send, ask him to go home earlier. He had another event with his children. This is a pretty straightforward request. It's a large-scale amendment requesting to change approximately 33.64 acres of this particular parcel from urban residential and the state residential to business park. This county-sponsored land use change is a portion of a settlement agreement related to code enforcement action from several years ago and an extension of that agreement just a few months ago by this board. The settlement agreement allowed them to continue to dig in the sandmine area, but not to expand the limits of that area. They were allowed to continue to dig deeper. And it was another requirement to change a portion of the property to urban residential. That portion has happened, and we're at the last portion that the county has agreed to do, and that is to sponsor this amendment to propose to change to business park. As I stated at the beginning of the meeting during the public comment, none of these, nothing that we're proposing to change would allow a landfill of any kind. This is business park. Probably the most recognizable example of this particular land use is the South Lawn Commerce Park developed by St. Joe immediately east of our sports park location on US 98 East. We've had a number of developments build out and lots there in the last few months. I think the last one was a distillery. But it's essentially a business park that allows a range of general commercial and light industrial uses.
Do we have any questions on that? Any comments, questions from the audience? Seeing none? What's our pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Was Ms. Palladini still here? I think she had asked to speak. I don't see her. Okay.
I think her concern had to do with the possibility of approving an area that could be used as landfill.
Okay. Okay. And Ms. Dale spoke to that earlier, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any other comments from the commission? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign.
Commissioners, real quick, if we could just go back to item number thirty-seven, I just want to make it as clear as possible the record. Could we also have a motion to approve the economic development element of the comprehensive plan?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Have a motion, second. Any discussion? Discussion from the audience? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioners. That concludes our legislative items. The next three items are quasi-adjudicial.
Okay. Anyone who anticipates testifying on any of the remaining items on the agenda, if you would, stand and raise your right hand. Do you, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you will provide to this board will be the truth? Okay? Whenever you come forward, if you would, just state and spell your last name and state that you've been sworn in. Have any of the Commissioners had any ex parte communications on any of these items?
No.
Okay, so with that, we're ready to proceed.
Thank you. The first item is Water Sound Origins Phase Four. This is a request to approve by final order, and I'll ask Renee Bradley to introduce this
Renee Bradley and I have been sworn in. I would first like to enter my staff report into the record so I don't forget that tonight.
We accept that.
Thank you. This is a major development order application submitted by Water Sound Company, LLC, requesting approval of 361 single-family lot subdivision associated infrastructure on 178.55 acres and the Water Sound Plan Unit Development and Water Sound North DRI for future land use of Coastal Village One. Staff doesn't have any outstanding technical review comments. Unless other evidence is presented to the contrary, this project meets the comprehensive plan, land development code, the Water Sound DRI, PUD. Be glad to answer any questions for the board.
Do you have any questions from Renee? Seeing none? Any questions from the audience? Would y'all like to speak? Say anything?
Unless you all have any questions, we'll have to answer them.
Okay. Seeing none? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, second. All, any other comments, questions? Last call. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Next item is item forty, Eden's Landing PUD Amendment. This is a request to approve by final order. It was reviewed by Tim Brown. He will introduce our...
Good evening. Tim Brown with Planning and Development. This is a major development order application submitted by Interlight Engineering requesting to modify the setbacks for residential and commercial lots and to eliminate the previously approved design code for Eden's Landing PUD. It's located on the west side of North County Road 395, north of East Point Western Road and south of Eden Gardens State Park Road. This was originally approved on February 3rd, 2004. It has since been built out. It's all built in there. The applicant is proposing to amend the development program to remove the previously approved design code in its entirety to allow for more flexible building regulations, aesthetics, and setback requirements. The amended setback deviations, these are what they're requesting in terms of deviations for single-family, 10 feet in the front, five feet on the side, and five feet in the rear. The 10-foot front setback is currently approved in the Eden's Landing PUD and is being asked to be retained. For multifamily, they're requesting six feet in the front, five feet on the side, and three feet in the rear. The six feet front and three feet rear are currently approved in the Eden Landing PUD, and they're asking for that to be retained. The commercial setbacks, these lots have been approved but not platted yet. They're asking for zero setbacks on all sides of each individual commercial lot. No commercial buildings will encroach closer than 25 feet to County Road 395 North or closer to 20 feet to the property line. The planning commission recommended approval of this project at their 9:14 meeting. Unless other evidence is presented to the contrary, this PUD amendment would be consistent with land development code and the comprehensive plan. I request that the staff report be entered into the record, and I'll answer any questions you may have.
We accept staff report. Do y'all have any questions? Any questions from the audience?
I have questions for the applicant.
The applicant may come up.
Explain what you're trying to do. Using your map.
Yes, sir. I'm David Smith with Interlight Engineering. I'm just wondering.
Okay, Dave. You want to cut these setbacks down, do you not?
Yes, sir. And I do want to reiterate some of what Tim said as well. The development was approved in 2004, and it was amended in 2007. And then it was, all of the infrastructure was built, it exists today, but it was approved during a different market with a very specific design code. So I'd like to elaborate on the setbacks, because we're here for two things, to request a deviation to setbacks and to also request the design code that was approved back in 2007 to be removed, because it's very specific to a very specific building design. And in my opinion, that's why it's been vacant all of these years, is because you can't really build a house today with that specific design code. So as Tim presented on the single-family lots, the 10-foot front setback was approved in 2007, so we are asking to retain that since it's already approved. The rear setback was approved at 22 feet, which exceeds county land development code requirement. So we're asking that to be amended to be five feet. The side setback was approved at 14 feet, which again exceeds Walton County Land Development Code requirement, and we're requesting that be five feet. And then the, and that's it for single-family. The multifamily, as Tim presented, six feet was approved in the front back in 2007, so we're asking for that to be retained. Three feet on the rear was also approved in 2007, so we're asking for that to be retained. 10 feet was approved on the side, which again exceeds the land development code requirement, so we're asking for that to be five feet. And then we're asking for the side setback facing the streets to be five feet also. The commercial setbacks, which are nine commercial lots at the front of the development in this area, the lots were also approved for the development order in 2007, so I do want to reiterate, we're not asking for any more density or intensity here. We're asking within each individual commercial lot, there's zero setbacks. You can sight the building within that individual lot, but as Tim presented, we can't be closer than 25 feet to 395 or 20 feet to the southern property line, so we can't encroach it. That won't allow an approachment in the landscape buffers or in the landscape buffer along the category 395. It's within the commercial lot, so you can move the building around within the individual lot. So I want to elaborate, because the setbacks, as you can see, were approved exceeding the land development code requirement, and so that's why we're asking for some of those to be reduced and just to give us the flexibility where a home builder can come in and actually build in this development today.
But the recommendations are still in the land development code?
Are they, yeah, that's what I said, are they variances or less than the land development code that we have now? Because I know your design code was very restrictive.
It was very restrictive. But some, and, yes, ma'am, some of the deviations we're requesting are less than the land development code requirement. For example, the side setback, it's two and a half feet less than the LDC requirement today.
Seven.
And having the five feet would still allow us to meet fire code separation between buildings, and that's the reason we do not go less than five feet, so then we don't get closer than 10 feet between buildings.
Do we have any comments from the audience? I think I've already asked that, but seeing none? What's our pleasure?
I make a motion. We approve.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
This project has been, as he said, vacant for over 10 years. And it started out, and I, you know, I own the company that did insulation, and we bid on a few of those jobs at the time, and that was right when the bottom was falling out. So with the restrictions in the building and the setbacks that were set, I'm not sure we'll ever see anything. It'll just become more of an eyesore. So I make a motion to approve.
Did I have a second?
A second.
A motion, second. Any other discussions? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Thank you.
Mobile fixture showroom warehouse. Would you say that again, Chairman? Mobile fixture showroom warehouse.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. The mobile fixture showroom warehouse, this is a major development order application submitted by David Lamar to construct 25,088 square feet of kitchen showroom warehouse space. The project's located on the southeast corner of US 331 and the Norris Cut Off Road. Proposed parcel is approximately 1.87 acres with the future land use of light industrial. You will recall earlier this year, this board approved a change to the future land use map for this subject parcel, to change it from rural residential to light industrial. The project was reviewed at the July 5 Technical Review Committee. It was approved at the subsequent meeting on August 2nd. The planning commission recommended approval at their September 4 meeting unanimously, and this project meets the requirements for a 25-year storm with regard to stormwater.
Do we have any questions of Matt?
The applicant is here, if he'd like to make a presentation.
Do we have questions of the applicant? Any comments, questions from the audience? Seeing none?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners. That's all we have.
Well, wait, wait, wait.
Well, no, I heard Dana outside, I think. Well, no, I heard Dana outside, I think.
We'll take a five-minute break.
I thought I heard Dana outside.
Did I give you enough time to? Yes. We are reconvening the meeting.
Thank you, commissioners.
Miss Noyes.
Yes, so we have two items. One of them is to reschedule the November 14, 2017 regular BCC meeting, and then the other item is a request to set a public hearing to consider an amended ordinance 2017-12. This is the NOPC ordinance that was considered by the board last March. The, Mr. Matthews is here, and also Ms. Tilton. Mr. Matthews represents the Sandeston Development, LLC, and Ms. Tilton represents the Sandeston Owners Association. They may want to speak with you briefly about the amended, the hearing on the amended ordinance. What I would suggest, if it's all right with the board, for the rescheduling of the November 14, 2017 meeting, I would suggest that we move that meeting to Tuesday, November 7, at 4:00 PM at the annex. And for the public hearing to consider the amended NOPC ordinance, I would suggest Monday, November 6, at 1:00 PM in the afternoon, here at the annex.
You need a motion?
Yes, for both of those, and did you guys want to say anything, I guess, before we consider those dates?
Let me-
Okay.
So, the BCC moved to the 7th?
At 4:00 PM at the annex.
And the Sandeston on the 6th?
I suggest 1:00 PM. There's something that morning here at the annex, but we could do any time in the afternoon on November 6.
Dana, do you want to say something?
Just real briefly, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner, I have Ms. Tilton here with me from Hop and Green, represented the Sandeston Owners Association throughout the various meetings that we've had concerning the NOPC. As y'all may know, that following the county's approval of both those ordinances, there was litigation that ensued by the Sandeston Owners Association against the county, and also my client. And through several, last several months, and many, many meetings, there's been a resolution of those cases, and both parties and their counsel have a proposed settlement in the form of a revised NOPC ordinance that eliminates over 300 units of density at the resort, has certain restrictions on placement of density, and other matters. And so, what we'd like to do, we believe this is what we call under Chapter 380, it's an ETube 1 amendment under subsection D, and we believe that it should be noticed that way. I will work with Ms. Noyes to have the proper notice for publication, and so we would ask you to set that meeting date on the 6 for a special meeting, and open to the public and comment, so that you can consider that proposed revisions to that ordinance.
And I just want to say congratulations on what I've read so far. I know I'm still going to hear it, but this has been long overdue. I was tickled to death to hear that both parties are willing to go into a spirit of cooperation and working together to make that development wonderful, and I certainly appreciate your hard work and those others, both sides. So, we'll hear more as it comes forward, but thank you so much.
Thank you, and we're very excited. Thank you.
Cindy, do we need a motion for each one of those, or do we need a motion?
That'd probably be cleaner.
Can I ask just one question?
Yes, ma'am.
How long do you think the Sandeston is going to take?
I do not anticipate it taking very long. I would say, I mean, we would have to take public comment, but the present, we won't have the full presentation like we did back in March.
Are you talking an hour, two hours?
Probably two hours at the most, would be my best guess.
From the applicant and SOA, I think that we could speak, there'd be a fairly short presentation going over and highlighting all the items. Of course, we've already delivered the proposed draft ordinance to the county, just so that they would have it and could be looking at it. I have no idea who may show up from the public and what they might want to say.
Well, I guess my question is, why don't we consider doing both on the 7th, if it's going to be a couple of hours? Just do a couple of hours, take a break, and then, I mean, why come down, you know, why meet twice and bring up staff down here twice whenever we can meet once, and one day get it all done?
Are you guys okay with the 7th?
On the 7th?
It's the next day.
Yeah, we could do the 7th.
It's up to the board.
So, set it at 1:00 on the 7th for this, and then our standard board meeting at 4:00?
Yeah, we could have lunch or supper afterwards, and get it all done.
You're talking about, you're talking about doing the NOPC hearing at 1:00 PM, and then the board meeting at 4:00 PM?
Yes, sir, all on the 7th, is that right, commissioners?
Yes. Or 2:00, whatever time y'all choose with the NOPC. He said not more than a couple of hours.
Well, I know that, but we don't know who's going to be out here that may want to talk, so.
We could have a break, and-
If it goes longer than the two hours, or still jamming us up on the other one.
Yeah.
If you need that, make that in the form of a motion on that one. We'll do it on November 7 at 1:00 PM for the NOPC hearing with Sandeston and SOA at the South Walton Annex.
And the, and the BCC meeting following at 4.
Yes.
You can do all that in one month.
If you want to do that, okay, and then add in that the BCC be at 4:00 PM at South Walton Annex on the 7th of November.
Do I have a second?
Second.
You have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Okay.
That's it, commissioners, thank you.
That's it.